The Tuesday, August the 17th, 2021, meeting of the Iredle County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like everyone to please bow your head in silent prayer, especially lifting up our country, our state and our communities in the face of an increasing COVID infection rates, and also for protection of our people as Hurricane Fred transits the mountains and is bringing a heavy amount of rain, a lot of potential for tornadoes, and keep our first responders and emergency communicators in your prayer. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Sir Chairman Mallory, there are no adjustments.
To the amended agenda?
To the amended agenda, and I would just note, the amended agenda, when we printed, it left off the appointment before the board, not sure how that happened, so that's why you have the amended, but the material is still the same from what's in your packet.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, motion carries unanimously. Okay, at this time, we have the bittersweet opportunity to recognize the service of two longtime county employees who are retiring, and we will miss their contributions on a daily basis, but we also wish them well as they move into their new status as retired, and usually, once you retire, you become some kind of a consultant because somebody needs to know what you know. So I'd like to come out front and just share with you a little bit. First off, we have Becky Gallagher, who has been our Board of Elections Director, Department Head since 2000. She came on board with the county in 1995, and within five years, she was the Director of the Board of Elections. She's served in that capacity ever since until 2021, this year. Becky, you know, is one of the senior Board of Election Directors out there, she's one of those go-to persons for insight from multiple counties throughout the state, she's a great resource. And things have changed a bit, you know, this is a small staff, four dedicated full-time individuals, and yet, they manage our entire election process, and it's not just a matter of conducting the election, you think, okay, well, that's just, you know, a couple months, but that whole process consumes them year-round, preparing and then recovering from the whole process. Registering voters, you know, at the time Becky came on board, there were about 47,000 registered voters in Iredle County, and 42,000, I believe, and today, there's over 126,000. So essentially, the number of customers to service, the voters of this county, has tripled during her tenure. Your staff didn't triple, but you think, there's not only the voter registration that goes on all year-round, there is the process of having to adjust what you were doing based on new guidance from the State Board of Elections or the legislature that happens to produce a new statute governing the electoral process, and so there's always some tuning that's going on. There's constant product improvement, process improvement with, you can imagine, going from a day of the computer with MS-DOS, green screen, if they had a computer, to, you know, today's touchscreen products, keeping up to date in that whole process, choosing the right kind of equipment that balances efficiency with accuracy, so that you can attain both with the emphasis on accuracy, you know. There's been a lot of concern about the integrity of the electoral process in the last year, but I can tell you the citizens of Iredle County can rest well and rest assured that our electoral process is spot-on, and that's a result of the dedication of a great group on the Board of Elections and the Board of Elections staff that's been led by Becky. And, you know, to be successful, you choose really good people to surround yourself with, and she has built a great bench to be able to step up in her absence and to carry forward. From candidates' perspectives, Becky's been a, you know, a, just a wellspring of information, you know, if you needed to know anything about the process, about how to get started, and all the rules that you needed to follow, she was there with a gracious dedication of her time, and there was no question that was too done to answer, probably too done to ask, but she'd answer it nonetheless. The duration of the electoral process today, you know, it used to be, you prepared for Election Day or Primary Day. Today, you have early voting that spans typically at least two weeks in multiple locations in the county, and so, to run that, you have to get volunteers, and then you have to staff all 29 precincts or so with volunteers on Election Day. And it's not just that you recruit somebody to show up, you have to train them in all of the duties and responsibilities and the complexities, the legalities of what their jobs are to ensure that our electoral process is inviolable and that candidates behave, you know, that's probably one of the more challenging things, coming out and being a referee about where somebody's standing or who they're talking to in terms of voters and just enforcing the rules that have been agreed upon. And I would like to give a shout-out to both of our parties who are represented on the Board of Elections and the party organizations for both the Republicans and Democrats who have, when it came down to looking at, okay, how do we deal with, you know, COVID in the midst of an election, and how do we maintain, work with the Board of Elections to ensure not just accuracy and integrity to the process, but safety in the process, you know, that they all work together to come up with a electoral process that was different from where we've done it in the past, but everybody with goodwill and a focus on delivering to the county, the citizens of this county, the ease of making a vote and to do it safely and to do it secure in the knowledge that their vote counted, they delivered across the board. So Becky, after 26 years of service to the county, you know, you've earned a respite, but I'm sure that you're on somebody's speed dial. So if you'd come up, Becky, with Larry, and, come on, Larry.
I would also like to have my two staff members.
Sure, come on up.
This has never been a one-on-one show, I can tell you that.
And...
You still are.
Just a little bit closer.
And I would invite other commissioners to have some remarks, I know every one of us owe a great debt of gratitude to Becky and the staff for just being a wonder to work for and work with. So this is to Rebecca, doesn't say Becky, Rebecca Gallagher, in appreciation for your 26 years of dedicated service to Iredle County 2021.
Thank you.
Karen, Jen, Susie.
Come on, come on, it's family.
Can I see y'all?
Becky, the floor is yours.
Well, I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege and honestly, a joy despite some of the elections that we had that were more challenging, it has been a joy to serve, and these two girls will be amazing. In my absence, they'll be great, and just always remember how important the Elections Office truly is to our democracy. Thank you. And you all have been so great to us, thank you for working with us, each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say too, on behalf of the candidates, elected officials, and citizens of Iredle County, the integrity that your office represents and the trust that is garnered there in your department, and congratulating Susie and Karen for their promotions to fill your void, is very important for the confidence of the citizens of the county, so I want to wish you health and happiness and plenty of quality time with your family. Thank you for your service to the county.
I want to thank you too, and I tell you, I appreciate the ladies that are taking over, and you know, I train tigers, and I'm not scared of much, but when I get a call from Karen, I'm sitting, oh, shoot, and then when I'm up at the Board of Elections and we're standing out there, and when Becky comes out and she just looks at us, and I'm sitting going, it's like a whipped puppy, we all, we are sick.
She lives in my house.
We do, we do, because we're scared, and I don't know why she carries that yardstick, but, you know, she's just out there doing this, but no, she's wonderful, and you know what, we respect you, that's the thing. You never had to really holler at us, you just come out there and cut those eyes, just like my mama, I know, my 90-pound-year-old mama can whip me anytime and I just back off, but we appreciate you, you did a great job, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You earned additional respect from me, whenever there was a question, you said, please call me directly, I would like to answer any question that anyone had, you would work with them directly. So, thank you so much, I'm pleased to be able to get through the campaign with the questions answered by you and your staff, it was incredible, so I feel fortunate to have had a campaign while you were still in your position, so, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I was just thinking, between Becky and Dean Lael, who is our next person to recognize, have over a half-century of experience between the two of us, almost split right down the middle. Dean, why don't you come on up, and, yeah, and you can bring your whole family up.
Bring it up here.
Yeah?
Come on, y'all not getting away with this, y'all young, the little ones got to come up here too. We won't embarrass you.
It's chocolate, I didn't tell him I was going to do that.
Okay, well, Dean Lael came to work for the county in 1996, and he came to work as the Veteran Service Officer. For those of you who don't know, we have a Veteran Service Office that, at the time, was one person, and we have that individual on staff to provide assistance to veterans and their families in Iredle County, who, we have a large number of former servicemen and women, navigate the complexities of the Veterans Administration or the various services, records departments, and all the things that they need, and they just don't know where the belly button is to push, and so having a Veteran Service Officer has facilitated that, in fact, the demand has grown so great over the years, that we now have an office staffed in Mooresville as well as here in Statesville, and have three, or maybe it's four, there's three individuals that are working in that office, so a lot of great work done there. And he came with a serviceman's heart as a former soldier in the United States Army, had at least 10 years of active duty, and went to college, and then came to Iredle County. So we were very fortunate to have him land on our doorstep, but he's really coming back to Iredle County, because I'm given to understand that you were a former member of the Grenadier Marching Band.
Yep.
In Statesville, and back in the heyday of the Grenadiers in 1979, it was a very competitive band statewide, I think went up to Washington on several occasions, so when he returned after his stint as a Veteran Service Officer, he went over to our Purchasing Department, which is part of our financing, finance department, to work as a purchasing specialist, and after about five years, the specialist became the purchasing agent for the county, and has served in that role ever since. That's one of those jobs that you, if everything's running perfectly, you don't know exists, things just happen. The number of contracts that this county enters into and the complexity and length of those contracts, I've heard tale of some of them running 350 pages in length, require someone who is out an eye for detail, as well as a broad understanding of the legal terminology, and the ability to then administer those contracts and administer the bidding process for contracts with the county. That's got to be above board, it's got to be transparent, and it's got to meet a number of very stringent requirements, and it's, and whoever's doing it is doing it with the knowledge that whoever's bidding out there, there's going to be one company that gets the bid, and then there's going to be other companies that don't, and so then they're all going to come, the ones that don't get it are going to come back in and try to pick apart the process to see if there was some little nitpooed mistake that they can get another shot at the contract and redo it. So if your purchasing agent is really on top of things, you never hear anything about this stuff, because these contracts don't come up to the board level, we don't have to deal with the issues of irate citizens or corporate citizens with the process, and we also are able to demonstrate to the auditors and to the state that we've got our stuff together, and that it is, meets all these requirements, and so it's a critical component, really, of our auditing process to make sure that we've been able to effectively administer the contracts that we have. And Dean has just done an amazing job, he and his staff of one have been able to, over the same time period, if you heard me talk about the number of registered voters that Becky had, tripled in the last 20 years, well, the number of contracts and the complexity of those contracts for the county has likewise ballooned. So, you know, I've sort of likened it to, you know, a duck going across the pond, it's just sort of gliding along, and from our perspective, you look at the duck, and it's just calm, cool, collected, just gliding through the water, what you don't see is underneath, you know, is paddling like hell, and what that is, that's Dean, he's making that duck go and look like it's easy, when it's not. So Dean, I personally want to thank you for making our jobs as commissioners... So, Dean, I personally want to thank you for making our jobs as commissioners and our county manager's job, who has to sign all these contracts, so much easier and one where we can sleep well at night, knowing you've been doing the hard work to dot the t's and cross the t's. So, and obviously, you know, it takes a family to support anyone's career. And Triva has done a wonderful job keeping him straight and cool, calm, collected. So whatever the secret sauce is, you know, the formula is, you have kept him on task and on time and on target. We appreciate that. And the rest of his family, son and daughter, you know, we're real excited that you could be here with us to be able to recognize Dean's contributions. We're going to wish him a great joy of being able to hang out with grandchildren a lot more. So y'all can pump him for a lot of good stories at the end of the day. So, Dean, and if I can get commissioners behind us here, and let's get family over here. I'll get over here, because you've got a lot of fans.
Got a lot.
Yeah, y'all just fill in all behind here. I've got long arms. We can do this like the Heisman Trophy, right? Okay?
Can't really see the picture.
There we go. Oh, you're cutting somebody's face off.
We're cutting all up here. Let's do it down low. There we go. How about that?
Okay. Dean, if you'll share with us your words of wisdom, parting shots?
Well, I don't have any parting shots, don't have a lot of wisdom, but I do just want to say thank you, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, and everybody. I appreciate you being here for this. Want to say thank you to Lisa. She's always had my back on some of these contracts that have been so, neither one of us really want to do them, but thank you so much. Antonia, she's been there, back there for me, helping me all the way. You can't be successful without good staff, and Antonia's just always been there, right underneath me, right there, helping me all the way. So I just want to thank you. Want to thank my wife, Triva. She's always been my support, and I appreciate that. My family, Derek, Shannon, my grandkids, Max, all my family, I love them all, so I wanted them up here, want to show them off. So I just want to say thank you all.
Thank you. I like Becky. I want to say thank you for your service and wish you health and happiness. And one of your goals, I see, is to make more memories and spend that quality time with your family. So good luck. Hope you have many, many, many more years doing that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you. I enjoyed talking with you earlier, and maybe you'll get that trumpet out, but with the amount of reading, I'm assuming you have some large volumes of books to take your time to read as well? Okay.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Now move on to an appointment before the board. Anna Rice, who is going to give us a request from the Irondale Council on Aging to present the proposed FY 2021 Home Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Another year rolls around.
Another year rolls around, and I'm thinking it's especially appropriate that someone from the Council on Aging is here this evening with the retirees. So, I did not bring my cards to pass out to Becky and Dean, but I'll follow up with I am here this evening to present Irondale's proposed 2022 Aging Funding Plan for your approval, for your review, and hopefully your approval. As I always do, I want to share a few numbers with you. I don't want to bore you with a lot, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. Although we haven't received updated stats from the recent census, the latest population figures do indicate that Irondale's 60-plus population now totals more than 40,000 people. And that's 23% of our total population. And I think more telling than that is the fact that the age 60 group does exceed the number of citizens 17 and under. And in fact, in six short years, one in five in Irondale County will be 65 or older. And in spite of the baby boomers, those born between 1946 and 1964, and if that math is too high for you, that's the 57 through 75 age group, the oldest group, the age 85 and plus, is still the fastest-growing segment of that part of our population. So, Irondale County is aging right along with the state of North Carolina. The Council on Aging is challenged, then, to provide an array of services meeting the needs of the newly-minted 60-year-old, as well as the 92-year-old intent on remaining at home in unfamiliar surroundings. Like all service providers, this challenge has only intensified during the pandemic, when the ill effects of loneliness, not just for seniors but for all age groups, have been brought to the forefront because of being isolated or the necessity to quarantine. Even so, the Council on Aging continued providing services. What about the 60-year-old wife who dropped by the senior center just yesterday? She was desperate for guidance as her 72-year-old husband no longer remembers how to write a check to pay their monthly bills. This morning, she attended the caregiver support group meeting at the senior center, where she heard from others facing the dawning journey of dementia. And in the coming weeks and months, as her husband's world collapses, she'll be able to use Council on Aging respite services to leave her husband safely at home in the care of a CNA while she shops for groceries or just takes a break from the 24/7 caregiving duties. Last year, we provided 4,948 hours of respite care to Irondale's caregivers. There's also in-home Level 1 chore services for the 85-year-old living at Cascade Gardens in Mooresville. She needs help with the most basic housekeeping tasks, vacuuming the floor, cleaning the bathroom, mopping the kitchen, or even changing the bed linens. And then there's transportation to vital services, to physical therapy for the 76-year-old stroke victim out of rehab and still needing intensive PT three times a week. He's unable to talk or use his left side and is now wheelchair-bound. His 74-year-old wife doesn't drive anymore and couldn't manage a wheelchair, even if she did. The COA can help, and we did. Even during the pandemic, we continued recognizing the importance of a balanced and healthy meal. In fact, we ramped up the fight against food insecurity and began offering nutrition services in new and different ways in Mooresville, Troutman, Statesville, and Harmony. Not only are we offering grab-and-go meals to our congregate participants, we contracted with ICATS to deliver hot meals to those who had previously ridden to the van to come and go to our congregate sites. In the meantime, our volunteers answered the call to continuing delivered to our frail homebound meal recipients, continuing to provide the daily contact, although socially distanced, for delivering meals to the seemingly faceless seniors we serve throughout our communities. We've instituted a frozen meal delivery program for older adults in our more rural areas to ensure they too are served, and we've done grocery deliveries for those who have illnesses that make them a little leery about being out, among others. We've been able to provide, on three different occasions, fresh fruits and vegetables to all of our participants through the Department of Agriculture Senior Nutrition Voucher Program. It's been a busy summer. But just to emphasize that nutrition services are indeed more than just a meal, there's Brenda, 68, who lives alone and has serious mobility issues. A dedicated meals volunteer delivered her meal and learned that Brenda had fallen in recent days, struggling to get up for hours on end. Once she got home, the volunteer called the office to find out if the COA could help with Lifeline or Guardian Alert or any one of those services you see advertised on television these days. They're specifically designed for seniors living alone and at risk for falls. We can, and we did. But there's also Sarah at the Plaza, homebound and alone with no family to speak of. When there was a COVID outbreak at the Plaza in the early spring, volunteers were instructed to leave all the meals with the manager at the Plaza there in the first-floor office, and she would deliver the meals to the various seniors throughout the building. Obviously, we wanted to limit the volunteer exposure to the virus. Sarah called the office, literally in tears, that volunteers were unable to deliver her meal. She said the meals volunteers were the only outsiders she had seen in months, and she missed them terribly. For Sarah, nutrition services were definitely more than just a meal. Last year, in total, we delivered over 45,000 meals to seniors throughout Irondale County. And finally, although senior centers were close to participants for well over a year, there were still weekly drive-throughs with activity packets and puzzles and books and games for seniors to pick up and enjoy. There were even monthly take-home craft projects. We also set up weekly virtual events, from everything from Yes, Virtual Bingo, and books extension groups, and exercise groups, and the caregiver support group moved to virtual during the early days of the pandemic. And we even had a crochet group who insisted on bringing their lawn chairs and crocheting in the parking lot, with masks on, of course. There was parking lot line dancing, and even a bridge force them, brought their card table and chairs and played outside until it got so hot it was unsafe to do so. Our folks are serious about staying active and involved. Working with the Health Department, after we heard of seniors who were in line for hours waiting to get their vaccination, we were able to host vaccination clinics at both senior centers by appointment only, and that went very well. Our participants even worked at home and made somewhere close to 1,000 masks that they donated to Irondale Memorial, Mooresville Manor, and Summit Place of Mooresville. All the while, Medicare Open Enrollment moved forward with virtual and phone-call counseling sessions, and TaxAid moved to a drop-and-go process for those needing assistance with filing taxes. Like all of you and your work in personal life, it's been a year. Senior centers have reopened now, but we did learn yesterday, we have an outbreak of COVID in one of our groups. Our wood carvers meet once a week, and it's 10 older gentlemen, all vaccinated, and four have tested positive for COVID. What a stark reminder, we're not done with COVID yet. And so we keep our heads down and move forward, ready to meet the challenges of providing services for the newly-retired senior who suddenly has too much time on her hands, to the newly-diabetic taking Healthy Living with Chronic Disease, a health promotion class, or maybe it's a false prevention class called Matter of Balance, or a seminar on the latest scams affecting seniors, or just maybe it's transportation, or in-home services, or job placement, or nutrition services, all services provided through the Home and Community Care Block Grant, which is funded through the Older Americans Act. This is reflected in the 2022 Aging Funding Plan that you have had a chance to look at. And as a reminder, Older Americans Act dollars, again, which funds the Home and Community Care Block Grant, requires a minimum 10% local match. The county has helped the COA meet this requirement for many years, and in doing so, brings back $9 in federal funds for every dollar contributed by the county. And we appreciate this vital support. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposed plan, and I appreciate your consideration in approving the plan for the 2022 program year.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions?
I just want to say thank you for all you do. Lots of great feedback, as usual, over the years, from all of your constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Howe.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 Home Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan as presented.
Any motion by Vice Chairman Neder? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And appreciate what you and your staff do on a daily basis. We now come up on item seven, which is public hearings. We have a public hearing to consider a request by Howard Bryan to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Troutman. And Mr. Matthew Todd will tee that up for us.
Good evening to the board. The request we have opposed tonight is a release to the town of Troutman. You can see it's outlined there in blue, it's currently zoned highway business. This is at the, just south of the Exit 42 interchange. The crosshatch area is already in Troutman's jurisdiction, and the applicant, property owner, has asked to be released to the town of Troutman. That's an aerial of the property, just kind of right there in front of Lowe's Home Improvement. And the 2030 Horizon Plan calls for this area to be highway interchange commercial. We've not, the site has been posted, and we've not had any comments for or against this request. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions for Mr. Todd?
Can you get him to put us a Chick-fil-A there?
I think there is a restaurant coming, but I don't know what it is.
State secret. Now, there are no further questions from commissioners. I will open the public hearing and inquire if there's anyone to be heard. No one has signed up that I'm aware of. I do take notice that former Senator Howard Bryan is present, and we thank him for his service to Irondale County back in the 1980s, until his district was redistricted following a census. Okay. I'll close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Troutman by Howard Bryan.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Very much. Mr. Bryan, thank you. Now move on to administrative matters that we reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting. These are usually fairly technical or lengthy presentations by staff, and it is a public meeting held in this chamber, and members of the public are certainly invited to attend. At this time, I would ask County Manager Mull to please tee up those matters for our consent. Motion.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from Parks and Recreation for approval to apply for Charlotte Regional Transportation Organization Grant. That was discussed by the board. It requires a 20% local match, and it was agreed by consent for the county to contribute up to 10%. up to 10%, with three other local governments contributing the other 10%. There was a request from Parks and Recreation for approval of a cost-recovery model. This item was tabled and referred to the Public Health and Well-being Task Force to do some further vetting and go through and discuss the impact of that model with the end-users. Then finally, there was a request from Tax Administration for approval of July 2021 refunds and releases, and that was agreed by consent.
Any further discussion on any of the consent items? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Brown to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item nine is an announcement of a vacancy occurring on boards and commissions. We have one announcement for the Recreation Advisory Board. We would ask that you, anyone interested, please look at our county website, and there is an application form there. Please return that to our county, where does it go? To the clerk?
It does.
To our county clerk, and we will consider that, all the applicants. We have a number of different boards and commissions that we rely on very heavily for their input, to be able to look into issues deeply and make recommendations to this board, so it is a way to be involved in our county government and provision of services, and we encourage folks to take full advantage of not only this offering here, but any others that might pique your interest and that you keep your eyes open when those come open. Moving on, item 10, appointments to boards. We have one appointment for the jury commission. Is there a motion on that matter?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rena Turner to have volunteered to serve for her first time as the jury commission.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We want to thank former Representative Turner for her willingness to continue to serve and to bring to bear her experience in the court system as the clerk of court in that process. Is there any unfinished business to come before the commission? Aren't hearing or seeing any. Move on to item 12. This is a public comment period, being the second meeting of the month, which gives anyone an opportunity to share what's on their heart for three minutes per speaker. We have a sign-up sheet, and I've got one person so far that's signed up. That's Mr. Brian Summers. And Brian, if you could come up and, just for the record, announce your name and address.
Good morning, Mr., good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. Brian Summers, 140 East Bell Street is where my family resides. Wanted to take the three minutes to first say that I'm thankful to this great country we live in, and just so thankful for the opportunities that this country has afforded all of its citizens and many, many more to come. The past six weeks through the Iredell Statesville School System, I sponsored with an organization, Angel Wings, with my Sidewalk Institute, a summer reading program through Third Creek Middle School with sixth and seventh and eighth graders, and we had a concentration of intensive reading, literally to push literacy and reading in the real world in conjunction with the Statesville Record Landmark. The kids receive newspapers every week from the paper, and we had an idea of trying to get their vocabulary changed and different in such a way. But with Dr. James and the school system, it was very productive. We got a chance to get in and work with kids to see where their assessment was, expose them to some new reading that they had not been experienced before, that was just very vital, that we all thought, which they experienced, the classics, Hawthorne, Twain, Dickens, and it totally had a different view for these kids, as well as African-American authors, Laron Bennett, Alex Haley. And so it got them to thinking about things, and they could see themselves in various other areas that they may have never thought of before. And so the school system made that happen. You guys made that happen. It was excellent. It was six weeks. It was very productive, and the follow-up was very good. Some kids learned to signature their name. They had not done cursive writing before because it's not in the school system. And so we had 42 kids walking around, signature their name on everything as if they were rock stars, because it looked so much better than the printed letters that they were getting to do. So that was a huge thing for me, to see the smallest thing make the biggest impact. And so very thankful for that. And pray for the country, our kids going back to school in a couple of days, the teachers, faculty, all of them, it really matters. And you guys set the example for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Summers, and thank you for your volunteering, a very worthy cause in support of our schoolchildren and all those other volunteers that were side by side with you on that. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Seeing or hearing none, close the public hearing, public comment period, rather, and move on to any new business that anyone's aware of?
No.
No? Okay. County managers report.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. Three quick reports. One, just to remind everybody about the public sector job fair that we will be hosting. It will be at Signal Hill Parking Lot on September 25th from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. And this will be an opportunity, we've extended an opportunity and an invitation to our other public sector employers in Iredell County to participate with us. Not only a job fair, hopefully to get some applicants for open positions, but also as an education tool to educate our public what it is to be a public servant and all the different job opportunities that we have and services that our departments provide. So we're really excited about this. This is our first public sector career fair that we're having, and job fairs, we're really excited about it. Do want to mention today was a difficult day for our public safety group with the tornadoes and the weather that we've experienced, which unfortunately I don't believe is over, but just wanted to tell them thank you. Like I said, we had some tornadoes that were reported, and the phones were ringing. Ecom was answering phones and dispatching, and our responders were going. And fire departments, rescue, law enforcement, EMS, they were there, and emergency management. It's amazing how, when the phone rings, they answer that call and they're there to help. So just wanted to show our appreciation and tell them thank you for today. Unfortunately, I don't think it's over. We talked earlier at the 5:00 about the rains that are in the mountains, and those will be headed this way. So we have worked, our emergency management department has worked with our responders to make sure that we have resources in place if we do have any flooding events. So we're very fortunate that we have some swift water teams that are here in Iredell County, and they certainly will be prepared if they're needed. And then finally, just a reminder about the annual Iredell County Agricultural Fair that opening night is September 3. So it's a 10-day fair. It'll be held at the fairgrounds in Troutman, and that starts in September.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Moll. We did have a closed session at the conclusion of our pre-agenda meeting to discuss an item pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1, subsection A4, for economic development. We also discussed an item pertaining to property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A5. There's nothing to report out on the first item, but I believe we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of approximately 8.75 acres on Twin Oaks Road from Mr. C. Tomlin for the purchase price of $90,000, and to authorize the county manager and/or the chairman of the Board of Commissioners to sign the necessary closing documents to effectuate the purchase.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the most important item on the agenda, which is a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We adjourn.